Good evening. I'd like to call the ordinance committee meeting to order. Chairman, would you call a roll?
Counselor Andronico, Counselor Kane, Counselor Devine, Counselor Debona, Counselor Harris, Counselor Yang, Counselor Mahoney, Counselor Phelan, Chellum McCaffrey.
Present.
Seven members.
Thank you. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Thank you. We have one item tonight, an item that I hope we can move in subcommittee and then move out of council later. I'm going to bring Shelley Dean up to the mic, and we are going to talk about order number 2023-003, approval of locations for solar energy implementation on public properties. Shelley, it's all yours, and good evening.
Thank you. Nice to see everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to talk about this. So the reason why I'm before you is because Quincy, like all communities, are really experiencing climate change and really experiencing, you know, the unfortunate features of climate change, whether they be heat waves, whether they be flooding, whether they be invasive pests, all sorts of negative consequences. So we really want, as a city, we really want to move ahead and try to mitigate as much as we can to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and to slow climate change. So I'm before you with this order for you to consider leasing, making available some land and some properties to lease for the purpose of creating additional solar arrays. So as some history, the city already has 13 large solar arrays on municipal buildings. The first was created through a grant many years ago. It was, it's actually the only city-owned solar array, and it's on top of Quincy High School. It's a 66 KW solar array. And again, you know, it's, the city owns that. Several years later, the city went through a competitive process and selected SolarCity to install additional solar arrays. And at that point, solar arrays were installed on 13 schools, including Quincy High School. So Quincy High School actually has two solar arrays on top of it. And those arrays are now owned by SolarCity, though SolarCity is now Tesla. And SolarCity owns, operates, and maintains those solar systems. It says PV Systems, PV for photovoltaics. So these systems generate electricity that the schools use. And combined, these onsite solar arrays generate somewhere between 9 and 11% of the electricity that's used by the city's municipal functions each year. The photo that we're looking at is the roof of the Clifford Marshall School, which you can see has solar panels on most of the facades. Now, solar energy is not only a good idea for greenhouse gas emissions and for climate and the environment, but it also saves the city a lot of money. So I wanted to give you an idea about how much money the city is saving currently with the existing solar arrays. So in, for example, in the SolarCity contract, we have a fixed price for 20 years to purchase electricity that gets generated on the roofs of our school buildings at 9.6 cents a kilowatt-hour. As a comparison, the city purchases the remaining electricity primarily under a contract with a third-party supplier, and the city pays about 17 cents per kilowatt-hour. Now, many of you know that even at 17 cents, that's a great deal compared to what the national grid rate is. But just comparing the 17 cents that we pay for the electricity that we purchase through traditional generation versus the electricity that we purchase from the SolarCity contract, we're saving about just under 7 and 1/2 cents per kilowatt-hour for every kilowatt-hour we use. And last year, we purchased 1.7 million kilowatt-hours. So last year, we saved about $126,000, just last year, by generating a portion of our electricity through solar. Now, the amount of electricity production varies each year, and it varies based on a number of factors, primarily weather. But I wanted to give folks an example of just how much electricity we currently are generating. And what I've listed is, I've listed all 13 of the municipal buildings that currently have solar on top of it, on top of them. In the first column with numbers, it's all the electricity that that property uses, that property used last year. The next column is the amount that got generated from solar, and then the last column is the percentage of solar. So for example, at North Quincy High School, which used a little bit more than 1.6 million kilowatt-hours a year, we generated 237,520 of those kilowatt-hours through solar energy. So we generated 14% of the electricity that that school uses from solar. You know, different buildings vary. Among the largest solar producers is the Bernazani School. The Bernazani School produced 64% of the electricity that the school uses through solar energy. And you can see, as you get down to the lower lines, that for all of the city's buildings, last year, 12% of the electricity that those buildings used were generated by solar. And if you then add in the additional electricity that the city uses, whether we use it for exterior lighting, whether we use it for water and sewer, whether we use it for open space, we generated 9% of the city's electricity use for municipal functions from solar energy. And again, that's just a photo of the top of, in this case, Broad Meadows, which has solar panels on the roof of it. Now, near and dear to my heart is the fact that solar energy reduces the greenhouse gas emissions that the city generates. So every time we use any electricity that's generated by solar power, it has used no greenhouse, it has created, sorry, no greenhouse gas emissions. There is some small amount of greenhouse gas emissions that are used, both in the creation of the solar panels themselves and in their retirement. But over time, they really generate very few greenhouse gas emissions, and certainly compared to traditional electricity. Again, that's the rooftop of the Parker School, which has solar on top of it. So what we're, the reason why I'm here before you is that the city has prepared in hopes to issue an RFP for a new power purchase agreement for additional solar electricity arrays. A power purchase agreement is really an agreement that, it's a long-term agreement that the city would sign with the selected solar developer. And the solar developer finances and manages and installs and maintains the solar arrays, and in exchange, we purchase the electricity at a discounted rate. And that's called a power purchase agreement. And what we have before you is a recommendation to be able to lease land so that we can look at developing additional solar arrays on a combination of rooftop units, a few parking canopies, and a ground-mounted array. And again, this is a photo of the Lincoln Hancock School, and again, you can see all the solar panels that already were installed on top of that school. So what we're, what I'm saying is that we're requesting permission to be able to lease these properties for the purpose of developing solar. And these properties were identified by having the city do a preliminary assessment of possible sites. We will then include those sites in the RFP and ask developers to submit their qualifications, their conceptual designs, and then their pricing, their quotes, for the various sites. They may decide that some sites are unsuitable. They may decide that some sites are too costly to develop. But we have done a preliminary assessment, and we would like to develop as much solar as we possibly can. Once we get that information back, the city will then determine which sites to pursue. And then finally, the city would execute both a power purchase agreement and a lease agreement for those properties. My final slide is, I wanted to acknowledge the fact that at the future animal shelter site at 99 Quarry Street, some Quincy residents who are members of the Quincy Tree Alliance have raised some concerns about installing ground-mounted solar. I wanted to, as best I could, outline where, what those concerns are, and I wanted to also address them. So the concerns, so on this photograph, on the upper photograph, I guess, the photograph with, the colored photograph with green, to the right of the road, the cleared area, the brown area, is more or less the site of the future animal shelter. And the area in the pink cloud is more or less the area that we're proposing making available to develop solar. The reason why we're talking about doing a ground-mounted array as opposed to a rooftop array at this area is because, as you may remember, the roof of the future animal shelter is going to be a landscaped roof. It's actually going to have trees up there and seating areas and whatnot, and there really is not space for a sizable rooftop unit. I wanted to acknowledge the fact that it's, that the future animal shelter at this site will be an all-electric building. So it actually will be a pretty heavy electricity user compared to many of our buildings. As an animal shelter, it actually has four different ventilation systems. It has a separate ventilation system for cats, a separate one for dogs, a third one for sick cats, and a third, and a fourth one for sick dogs, so, or for quarantine dogs. So it actually will be a fairly heavy electricity user, and that's why we think it's so important that we install solar near that, for that building's use. The RFP that has been drafted requires compliance with the Quincy Tree Protection Ordinance. And what folks may remember is that the Quincy Tree Protection Ordinance requires that all trees that are deemed significant, meaning that they're of a good size, need to be replaced if they are in fact cut down. So we will, should we find that we need to remove any trees of significance, we already have a plan in place to replace them. The quotes that we, the RFP says that should any of the sites, not just the ground-mounted sites, but should any of the sites require any tree work, any trimming of trees, any tree removal, that must be identified. So we will know about that. That won't come as a surprise to us, and then we can understand that and address that as the time becomes available. And again, I wanted to just point out that the area that we've identified as a potential site for a ground-mounted solar array near the animal shelter, to the best of our knowledge, does not contain any significant trees. It's a sloped area. It primarily includes sumacs. And I took a picture of it on one of the snowy days this winter, because it's a little hard to see in the green picture, but it really is not an area that has significant trees. So I wanted to lay that out and tell you that we take those concerns seriously. We obviously want to do right by folks who are concerned about the environment in Quincy. We don't think we have all the answers ourselves, but we do feel like we've addressed those concerns. So with that, that's really the end of my presentation. I'm hoping to be available for questions.
Sure. Thanks, Shelley. Questions from the council? Chairman recognizes Counselor Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shelley, I just want to just say thank you so much, because it's not just this proposal that you bring in front of us, but everything that you do, you're always championing, you know, making sure that we're moving forward in a way that's environmentally conscious for us with everything that we do. So I just want to, first of all, thank you for that, like, for being our champion for this, essentially. And I do appreciate also that you added the slide about the concerns raised by Quincy Tree Alliance, and then laying out the process moving forward. So just to clarify and make sure that I understand, so this is to approve a proposal that we want to put out there to have folks come back to give us specific details on exactly where they would go? And that would still have to go through an approval process before anything actually gets installed, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. And once those quotes come in, how can we just stay up to date with what those quotes look like when they lay out the details for where the solar panels are going to go?
So we haven't really determined what that process will be like. It's my expectation that there will be some level of staff review to determine, you know, which, first of all, we may not get proposals on all of the sites. Let's just start with that. You know, we put out that these are 15 sites that we would like developers to consider, and some developers may decide that they're only interested in a handful of them. So we'll be limited by the responses we get. But once we get those responses, we want to look at them and understand specifically what they're talking about. In selecting these sites, we did our best, and we had lots of conversations about the future uses of these sites. We want to make sure we're not installing solar on a site that we then plan on renovating, you know, in a couple of years, or adding an addition, or something like that. So we will, you know, the expectation is that there will be some staff review. We will then obviously go to the mayor's office for their consultation as well. And I think we'll have to discuss what the process is from there.
Great. Okay. I mean, I think it'd be great, obviously, for us to be looped in on that, just that we can be up to date with what comes back and what's being proposed. But I will say, if I know that there's anything about you, it's that you're thoughtful and thorough with everything you do, so I have no doubt that before anything actually gets finalized, there'll be a really thorough process with us moving forward. And so it sounds like, again, this is, you know, very preliminary. It's just the beginning. There are a few sites that have been considered, but we still need to hear back on whether or not they're viable, and if they are viable, you know, to what extent is that site even going to be developed. And so understanding that process is really helpful for me, and I just thank you again for being you. You're great, Shelley. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your kind words.
Thanks, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor Debona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shelley, thank you for kind of getting ahead and doing a proactive approach on the animal shelter. Obviously, we're going to, we were going to get concerns if we obviously took a whole bunch of trees down, but you went into the area that looks the most remote of less trees. It almost looks like there's no trees in that particular, I guess, like, it looks like pink to me, pink, you know, cloud, I guess. So you picked an area that's very good. So kudos to you about a proactive approach upon the Tree Alliance's, you know, objections to having it taken, you know, cutting down trees. So thank you for doing that and raising that and picking an area that looks really like a remote, looks like ground, no trees in that particular area. Just thinking back of the days when I was on the school committee about putting those solars on most of, almost all the schools, and it looks like on the list, we have a couple of schools that we haven't got to yet or in the process of getting to this stage. Would this complete all 18, 19 schools? Is there anyone missing?
No, it won't. If I remember correctly, the, there are a few schools that, because of the condition of the roofs, they, it doesn't warrant putting a solar array which is going to last for 20 or 25 years. The roofs are not old enough to replace at this moment, unfortunately, or fortunately. So we will still have a few schools that don't have solar.
Which schools are we missing? Which, we have, looks like about 12 of them existing. We have another, I think, four to five coming on. Which schools, just, because obviously, when you, when you do these roofs, you want to obviously do the roof first and then put the solar on top. Is that correct? Yes, you have to do both. And the conditions of some of them are still have some life, life on them?
So the school that comes to mind, and I'm not sure if I've got the complete list in my head, but the school that comes to mind is Point Webster, which, which has a pretty, it actually has a series of roofs, but fairly old roofs that are not yet eligible. We often pursue MSBA funding to replace roofs so that it's less costly for the city, and they're not quite eligible for MSBA funding yet. So our hope is that when those roofs get redone, we will look at installing solar there.
Do you have a breakdown of the cost savings making this conversion from regular electricity to solar? Do you have, considered a breakdown or how much savings this would be in this particular unit group?
So I don't, because, for a number of reasons. First of all, it's not clear to me how large the solar arrays will be. We will obviously encourage developers to safely install solar on all, as much of the roofs as they can. There may be sections of the roofs because of the structural nature of the buildings that can't support the additional weight of the solar, or there may be walkways that, so that we can access rooftop equipment safely that get avoided. So I'm not sure what size of the solar arrays, that the solar arrays will be, and I'm honestly not sure what the pricing will come in at. But I can say that, you know, with the SolarCity, you know, arrangement, we're saving at least $126,000 a year. That seems like, you know, for 20, for 20 years. So it seems like a good deal.
Yeah, I know when we did this many years ago with the schools, it was a win-win, and we turned them on, and we had it, started getting savings. Now we're back at the apple to get the other schools. You talked about the animal shelter and having it on ground. Is all of these other ones going to be on roofs?
So most of-
Are any of them going to be on the ground as well?
Most of them are rooftop units. There are a few potential parking canopies, so it would be ground-mounted in the sense of it's not on a roof, but it's on a structure over a parking area. Again, we would have, we've identified some potential areas, and we'll have to see whether the developers agree that it's financially feasible to do that.
Well, I think we're in good hands with you, Shelley, so I appreciate all your time and effort on this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor Devine.
Shelley, how are you?
Great. Very nice to, very nice to see you in this role.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So when these, we leased them out, and I assume they make money, that's why they want to lease it?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear.
So when we lease these space to them, so they probably make money at this, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do we have an ability to, I know you talked about roofs that aren't repaired, you know, that are beyond repair or not ready for it. But if, I think, I'm not 100% sure, but Montclair needs some work done on their roof, and I see it listed here, but it's not technically on the area where you would be putting them. Do we have the ability to request them to make some of those repairs? It's on the parapet walls, I believe, that we need work done. Is that something that we can ask them to do when they're putting that out to bid? Does that make sense?
I suppose that could be included. I mean, what we have done is, we have identified newer roofs.
Yeah.
So, and many of our schools have multiple roofs. So it's, sometimes we do a section of a roof and we don't do the other.
No, I understand. I think the Montclair roof is relatively new, actually, but they didn't completely finish parts of it on the outside walls. And so I just thought if we had an ability to have them maybe pick up part of the tab, I'm not sure if that's what we do or not, but.
I have to admit, it isn't how it's, how the RFP is currently structured, and we can certainly discuss it and see if that makes sense to add as a possibility. You know, that it would obviously, we'd obviously pay for it, right? It would result in a higher cost for the electricity, but you're right, we may end up with a larger solar array as a result. So we'll have to go through that exercise and look at that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Shelley, thanks. Oh, Counselor Andronico, forgive me.
Apologies. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to double-check on the 99 Quarry Street across from the proposed animal shelter. That sites, is that contingent upon when the animal shelter goes into effect, or is rather built, and is 99 Quarry going to be a parking lot, and then we would have ground-mounted solar panels? Or is that regardless, there's a parking lot there for the animal shelter?
So while we have a possibility that, that some of the parking area at 99 Quarry Street may be appropriate for a solar array, truthfully, I think it's, that part is not going to be economical. To do ground, to do a parking canopy is much more expensive than a rooftop unit, for example, because of the amount of steel that you need. So, and the parking area at the animal shelter just isn't a very big parking area. It's just not that big a building, to be perfectly honest. So that's one of the reasons why we decided to go with just a ground-mounted system, or put out the possibility of doing a ground-mounted system. There's, across the road from the animal shelter, but in fact fairly close to the building, is a slope that we thought that we could take advantage of and, you know, build into the slope and do a ground-mounted array there.
Okay. I don't know, I just have a little bit of concern about taking that little bit of open space and putting some solar panels up. I do kind of prefer them to be on rooftops or on the parking lots. I just don't know if any of my colleagues share that concern. It's not in my ward, so I don't want to overstep, but I might consider if my colleagues might like to remove that. Just curious if any of my colleagues have similar concern.
Well, I, you know, I think if the building could have supported a rooftop unit, that would have been our first choice. It's the least expensive way to develop solar. But in fact, the building design, which is a very elegant design, has a lovely green space up there. And with that green space, solar is really not compatible on the roof.
Totally understand. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counselor Mahoney.
I'm just going to follow up on Counselor Andronico. So I understand that the rooftop at the animal shelter, it has like a place for them to kind of walk the animals up there, correct? Yeah. And, you know, it's unfortunate, because these are things that we should be able to be looking at together, because I do think that would probably be the best place for the solar panels would have been on the rooftop there, because we have the animal park right over there, and it would have been able to save maybe having it across the street. But I believe that the animal shelter was supposed to, is it supposed to be net zero? I think that was going to be our first net-zero building.
Sorry, I'm having trouble.
Was the first, was the animal shelter, is it supposed to be net zero? I'm having, I don't remember. I'm trying to remember. So it's just going to have electrical, I thought it was supposed to be the first net-zero building?
So the animal shelter is being built as an all-electric building, but not as a net-zero building?
Okay. My memory's hazy on it, so.
That's okay.
I guess the question that I have, and I'm going to follow up the same, is that, and I know the parking area is very small up there. It can't even hold currently the animal shelter when people go up to use, not the animal shelter, the dog park, when people go up to use the dog park, there's just, people are parking on the side of the road. It's very hard to go in and go out up there, because there's not enough sufficient parking for it. I don't think they realize how, you know, popular it was going to be up there. How visible will be the ground-mounted? Is it, I mean, I see it on the map, but how visible will it be in that open space? And is that space that people can currently access? I don't know. I'm just asking this.
So it's not space that's really accessed right now. It is, you will see it as you drive up that windy road. There's no question. You know, as you're entering that roadway, you know, the solar panels will be built into, assuming, assuming it gets built as we're conceiving it.
Right.
The solar panels will be visible. They will be off to the left as you're driving up that roadway. Once you're at the top, I don't think you'll see them.
Okay. And then the other question, when they put these, when they put them in the ground like that, how are they, how are they, are they, how do they go into the ground? Because I know it's very rocky and granite, there's a lot of granite up there. So will there be any concerns with them being able to put them in that area? I'm just curious.
So we don't know.
Yeah.
You know, there, there's going to have to- You know, there, there's going to have to be some subsoil investigation to decide how they mount them. There are a lot of different techniques.
Yeah. I was just wondering how deep they had to go into the ground. I didn't, I don't know, so I guess that's a concern for the area, and if that area doesn't work, is there, is there, because it, it sounds like it has to, something has to go up there, because the animal shelter is going to be all electric, and you need it to be close. I'm, I'm assuming this, Shelley, so if you could just help me out, if, if, let's say they come back and they say we want to do every location except for this location, what happens to the electricity to power the animal shelter?
Well, then the animal shelter ends up being a, a very high-energy user, a very high-electricity user, and, you know, for its size, right? It's, it's being built as an energy-efficient building, but for its size, especially because it has these four different ventilation systems, you know, it will be a very high-electricity user. And so folks may know, I'm, I'm sorry that I'm, I'm going to digress here, but this is, this is kind of-
That's okay.
I'm an energy geek, right?
I know.
So, so when we pay electricity-
That's what we love about you, though. Because you teach us things.
When we pay electricity bills-
Yep.
-on commercial buildings, we pay not only based on usage, the, the total amount of electricity we use, but we also pay demand charges based on how much electricity you use at any given moment. And demand charges can often be even higher than the amount of usage that you're using. So it's, to the extent that we have the ability to do a, what's considered behind-the-meter installation, so that any electricity that gets generated immediately gets used by the building, then we can significantly reduce our electricity costs. We've significantly, significantly reduced our electricity costs at these 13 buildings, not just the seven cents per kilowatt hour, 7.4 cents per kilowatt hour, but because we've reduced our demand charges.
Right.
Because at any given moment, when the sun is shining, we're just not, we're generating some of the electricity the building is using, and this building is going to be using electricity 24/7.
Right.
So for all-electric buildings, it's really important when you have the opportunity to pair it with solar, so that you can reduce your electric, overall electricity use and your costs associated with that electricity use.
So I guess that's why I'm bringing this up, because I do remember when they did the presentation, that this building was supposed to be 100% electricity, and that they were going to have solar panels, and that was part of the driving force behind it. It's, it's very elaborate, and, but the electrical solar panels were an important part of the animal shelter, and I think we always knew it was going to be across the street and ground-mounted. But I guess my concern is, is that we're going to go out for bid, and if they were to come back, and this is just a concern, if they were to come back, it's really, it's, that's one of the locations that's kind of, it's, we have to have. It's not a, it's not a, we want to have, we kind of have to have. So when we're talking about, like, it's more expensive to put, you know, the parking lot mounted steel, I, I really think we have to play that out to find out what the cost is to be able to have to, you know, to, to go into the granite that's up there, because that's some of the problems that we had in general with building up there, both the animal shelter and the dog park. I think it's been known that we've run into some challenges up there. So I'm concerned about the location, and I'm concerned that it may not, I mean, there might, this might actually be, there may, this may be no problem at all, but we have to make sure that, it's, it's kind of a non-starter, we have, that's a one location that we have to have it in, isn't that correct?
From my, I mean, there's no-
Again, this is your perspective.
... is strong, right?
Right.
Even though Chris-
I'm going to look over to Mr. Walker, would you, would you-
... come on pretty strong when we talk.
Yeah.
From my perspective, it's an, it's a really important location.
Yeah.
You know, we all make choices, right? It seems like it's, to me, it's, it seems like it's an, an important location to pursue. But, you know, even if we want to, it may end up being infeasible.
Right.
Or just so costly that we're not going to do it. But, but I would like to, to pursue it-
I think you have to pursue, yeah. Yeah, I don't think it's, I think, I think the way that that building was approved, it was approved that it was going to have electricity, and it's going to have to be up there somehow. So I guess through you to Mr. Walker, if it ends up being too costly, and this is, sounds like a project that's further down the road, what do we do there? Do we put it on the roof? I mean, I'm just concerned.
It's not a must-have.
Oh, it's not a must-have, okay.
No, it's important to Shelley, but, and it's important to the city, we want to make it work there, but if the-
I think that's how it was sold to the city.
The geotechnics comes back, that it doesn't work, and it's not viable for any of the proposals that come in from the city, it's not the end of the world. It's less than what we would have wanted to produce for new solar electricity, but it's not the end of the world.
So I guess the reason why I'm bringing it up is that it was, the way it was, it was brought to the council is that it was, you know, that was part of the package that was brought to the council, and I think if, at the time that we were talking about this, I think we probably would have, and, and known that this was an option to put it on the roof, as opposed, we might have been able to, to cost that out, and we might have been able to save some, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there. But I am concerned about that, that area, and I realize that you're going to go out and do an RFP, and they're going to come back, and they're going to tell you that, and this may be, this may be, like, it may not even be an issue, but my concern is, is that there's granite up there. There may not be trees, because they can't grow through the granite, so you have shrubs. But, but I, I do get concerned, and, you know, the other thing is, is that we don't have a lot of open space, and it is a visual, it's, it's nice when you go up there and you can see, and when you drive up there, you'll see the solar panels. But I'm very excited, I don't want you by any means to think that this isn't something that I'm excited about, it's, it's something that's well overdue in the city. We did it with the, the, with the pilot for the 11 schools that we did back in 2011, 13 schools that we did back in 2011, and it's exciting to see this before us again. And I'm not, I'm not as educated in the electrical as being, but I've been kind of known to be a geek too, so it's okay, it's, it's a popular crowd to be in. I, I guess what I, the other question I have is, and I can't remember, this is something I can't remember, so once we get these locations decided upon, I know the school committee has to vote on it too, but it's usually, it's, they haven't, this hasn't been brought to the school committee for the schools that you have on this list, correct? Or has it?
No, we haven't officially gone before the school committee, we've obviously gone before the, it, what we have done in identifying these sites, we did circulate to, to the superintendent, or I guess, I guess at this point it was the former superintendent-
Right.
-because this has been in process for a while. But we did circulate a list of potential sites and ask, you know, for input, we asked, you know, we circulated it among many departments to try to make sure that we weren't inadvertently planning for a site that someone else had future plans for.
Right. So I just wanted to mention that, to just, just respectful that we're talking about school buildings, they're not, you know, they're, they're run, they're, they're overseen by a different board, body, but I know that they would be, as long as it was saving something in the schools, I mean, they, I think they would like to see the direct savings go into the schools, as opposed to just general fund, but that's just, that's just how, is how this works. When we're done with this proposal of these build, this locations, are there any other locations that you see potentially in the future down the road?
Sure. I mean, I think that, first of all, does, you know, the city continues to develop buildings, right? So-
Or acquire them.
Or acquire buildings. So, so sure, there are future opportunities, and there are, you know, a handful of buildings that because of the condition of the roofs, when the roofs get replaced, it may be time to look at those.
Okay.
I think we will have identified at this point most of our largest buildings, and it's also true that the economics change over time.
Sure.
So it may be a building that just didn't pencil out before the economics change, and now it, it would be a good candidate in, or it would be a good candidate in the future. So I don't want to say that this is all of it. There is another site that is, is not actually part of this RFP, that the city isn't planning on installing solar on, which is part of the garage for the public safety building.
Okay.
The reason why it's not part of this RFP is we needed to work with a solar developer to help us design the garage, to make sure that it was suitable for solar, you know, that was really a, they're happening at the same time, so you take advantage of that.
Yeah.
So, so that's another site that there will be solar developed.
And then one other question. Oh, so, yep.
Just to spend this for a minute, so we can open up, and then I'll come right back. Shelley, stay right there.
Sure.
I'd like to open up the, call the meeting to order for the regular city council meeting Monday, March 6. It is now 7:09 PM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
President.
Counselor Kane.
President.
Counselor Devine.
Yeah.
Counselor Harris.
President.
Counselor Liang.
President.
Counselor Mahoney.
President.
Counselor McCarthy.
President.
Counselor Phelan. President DeBarna.
President.
Eight members, you have a quorum.
Eight members, we have a quorum. Please stand if you can. At a moment of silence, please use it as you wish. Please turn to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, please read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going to recess this regular city council meeting and go back into ordinance.
Welcome back, Shelley. Counselor Mahoney, go right ahead.
Thank you. I just was going to ask two other questions, and, and one was, and I'm not even sure if it's possible, but I know that we're talking about a new garage down in the Ross Parkway, and then also the, the Kilroy, the garage that's over there. I'm not sure, are there solar panels already on those, or I'm not curious? Is there an ability to put them there?
There are non-solar panels on the top of the Kilroy garage. It would be my hope, and I actually have an agenda item when I meet with Chris Walker, to discuss potentially installing solar panels on, on the new garage.
So I guess I'm curious why that would not have made your list, just out of curiosity? Just because it seems like an obvious, like garages are an obvious place, you see them being put on them all the time. So I'm just curious why those weren't, that particular, the new one's not built, so I understand, but why would that not have?
My sense is that, we certainly considered it. My sense is that it was objectionable to some of the neighbors who are taller, nearby neighbors who would be looking down on the, on the rooftop of the garage.
Okay.
You know, one person, I, I personally think solar panels are pretty, but, you know, what do I know?
Well, if they're benefit in the city, I don't think maybe our neighbors that are taller than us in downtown should really get to have a say on that, but that's, you know, because there's not a lot of neighbors that are taller than that building. But I do think it's important that we, we look at all of our buildings for this, because it's really about the efficiencies that we're doing in the city, and it's, it's definitely going to save the city in the long run, and it's better for us to do this now, and that would probably be a great location, it's a garage, and I know that the neighbors across the street, when that garage was being built, weren't too excited about it either, but the garage was built, so I think we have to all bear some of the issues of living in a downtown urban area. So I'm glad to hear that's a proposal that you'll be hopefully bringing back before us. One other question, I don't really know, like, I know, how close to, if, if they go at 99 Quarry, Quarry, how close to the street would those solar panels be?
I don't know. I, I don't know. I mean, we'll have to, we'll have to see.
Yeah. Because your bubble kind of goes right out to the street, so I'm just curious, like...
That's a rough approximation.
Yeah, I really, no, I understand.
It's a rough approximation. I don't, that, there are plans to build a conduit under, under the streets, so that the electricity that's generated on one side of the street-
I remember that part, yeah.
-can, you know, can be connected to the building itself.
Yeah.
But exactly where it's going to pop up, I don't know.
There is one, do they, because I don't know, do they generate any heat, or like, when you, anybody gets close to them, because they'll be on the ground, and that's, I'm just curious, like, the, I've never, I've only seen them from a distance, I've never gone up close, do they generate any kind of, like, no?
They don't really generate a lot of heat, but, but solar panels are black.
Mm-hmm.
They tend to be glass. So, so they, they, you know, when the sun is shining on them, they do get warm.
Yep.
Not necessarily from the electricity that's being generated, I believe.
Yeah.
I believe it's really just the sun's reflection on, on the, on the glass, and, and they certainly shed, you know, if, if anyone has solar, has seen a, a solar array, it will shed the snow on it-
Oh, yeah.
-much more quickly than, than another area.
Right, and that's understandable. I guess, and then, because it's in, I don't anticipate this, but I get always concerned with anything, that how high up would they be? Would they be, you know, somebody, if kids were just to be, I wouldn't want to see any damages happen to it, so this is just another, you know, question about how tall they'll be, or how, how close they'll be to the street, how, if they're going to be kind of on a, if they're located where you want them to be, if I have an understanding where you're talking about, it's kind of slopy, so it's not really a place that most people would be walking, so I'm just-
So our expectation, and again, you know, we'll have to see what the designs come back at.
Yeah.
But our expectations is that it really will be built against the slope of the building-
Right.
-I'm sorry, not the slope of the building, the slope of the site, and it won't be taller or much taller than, than the slope.
Okay. I'm just, I was just bringing those things up, just because they're concerns, it's kind of a, I don't anticipate it, but you never know, like, you know, I've been spending a lot of time walking through, like, Rashidi Drive Blue Hills, it's all spray painted, and I don't want to see that happen to solar panels, so I'm not saying that it would, but it's just, you, you do have to have those kind of realistic issues that could potentially happen, and areas that are, you know, sometimes quiet at nighttime, so just something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Just a few words, Shelley, first, thank you for the presentation tonight. I know that your team has done a great job, and I know that Quincy has jumped into the solar panel business maybe 10 years ago now, when we started the schools, so it's great that we stay at it and try to utilize it the best we can in the right spots. So I think these, these locations you have listed are great candidates, as you said, they won't all be probably used right now, but the, the layout in the schools, especially the schools, I think, out there, you know, are, are a big asset to us. I wanted to recognize Counselor DeBarna before we say goodnight, and I, I think Counselor wants to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve of the locations for solar energy implementation on public properties. I'd like to make that a formative motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thanks, Shelley.
Thank you.
I'd like to open the regular Quincy City Council meeting back to order. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda, please.
Number one, 2023-026, an order designation of the polling places.
Motion made by Counselor Liang to approve. Seconded by Counselor Kane, any discussion on the motion?
Since we have a very light agenda, I want to get into this a little bit, just because there's, there's 30 different precincts, 31 with the 501A, and 15 out of the 31 will be changed in this next coming election. Just a little bit to the Madam Clerk, if I could, how are we going to get a lot of the information out to the public, for the voters on this, on these polling places?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to stop by saying that we're, we're trying to work into all the schools the best the best we can in the city and utilize the schools that we have. They're beautiful, and a lot of them are new, and we're going to do a mailing to every household that has a registered voter. So everybody will know ahead of time. We'll hold off on the mailing probably until the beginning of August so that it's fresh in everybody's mind. We'll certainly do our due diligence with ads in the paper and getting all of these changes out on our social media. QA TV has also offered their venue to support us, along with the Quincy Sun and the Patriot Ledger.
You know, obviously, we've been in our, every 10 years, it's the consensus and the possible redistricting of certain areas of the city. And as we've moved into our calendar year, we no longer are going to be having school on Election Day. So that puts a situation where we can use the facility at the schools to do a lot of the polling places, because the children will not be inside the schools. So just to elaborate a little bit about some of the differences in some of the wards and precincts. I'm just looking at the calendar in the order in front of us. In Ward 1, there's obviously five precincts. Four out of the five precincts are going to be changed. Just to elaborate a little bit on it, Ward 1-1 will be going to Broad Meadows Middle School. Ward 1-2 will be going to Snug Harbor Community School. Ward 1-3 will now be going to Quincy High School. Ward 1-4 will be going to Merrymount Elementary, and Ward 1-5 will be now going to Atherton Howe Elementary School. In Ward 1, there was some differences, obviously, with moving, and they look to be in the same proximity of the original polling place. As we move into Ward 2, it pretty much stays the same, except for 2-3, which is Ward 2, Precinct 3, which is Point Webster Middle School. As we move into the other wards, there's not a lot of big changes. Ward 3, 3-1 is now at the Bernizani School. There was a little bit of a fluctuation. It used to be up on Prospect Hill. The Walson Hill has now moved to Walson Elementary School, which is 3-2. And the push that was in that school was 3-5 was originally in there. Now they're going to move over to Montclair Elementary School. As for the other precincts, they stay the same in that particular ward. Ward 4, there's some differences here. We're going to now start to use the Southwest Middle School, with allowing 4-1 to use that, and also 4-5. The Lincoln Hancock is going to stay the same at 4-4, and the Elks Lodge, 4-2 and 4-3 are going to stay the same. So 4-4 doesn't change as much. There's going to be a three polling place, which will be Southwest Middle School, because 5-1 is now going to be allowed to use that. So there'll be, there'll be a three-poler at Southwest Middle School, which is great, because there'll be the proper parking in that particular location. And obviously, if we've changed the districting, it's now a 5-1A. We'll go to Point Webster Middle School. The only other two that exist now left is the 5-2, which is going to go now to the Central Middle School. 5-3 stays the same at Adams Academy. 5-4 and 5-5 still stay at Beachwood Knoll as the double precinct. Ward 6 just about doesn't get anything touched. They all stay about, just about the same, with the exception of 6-2, which will now go from Knights of Columbus to North Quincy High School for a double precinct. So there's not much movement here in Ward 6. But as we know, some of the districting had changed in different particular wards. And I think the Quincy Sun and the Patriot Ledger would do a nice article pretty early here to let, you know, the voters know that we particularly are going to be using some new locations for our polling places. Be a nice, great article if we can move that forward. And then obviously, Madam Clerk does a real good job with our elections in getting the information out, whether via, whether our website, and then through the mail, and all the other avenues of doing that. So I do appreciate that. This is something that's very important to the city, because we are going to move a lot of locations, and I think it was very important to let the public know tonight, as we, as a city council, will vote on it, that these locations will change. 15 out of the 31 will change locations. So I hope counselors can get your word out to different wards and get the word out in general. Madam Clerk, go right ahead.
I tried to be, we tried to be as mindful as we could for the city of Quincy to keep everybody in their neighborhoods. But if, in fact, you know, you do have a reason that you can't get to your polling place, we're certainly going to have early voting and vote by mail available to, to anybody who requests it. Thank you.
That's a very good note, Madam Clerk, because a lot of them were inside the senior buildings. Martinson, Bignell, now they're moving to the schools. So that, you know, it'd be a lot easier for folks that are in those buildings that they want to vote, can vote early, in person, or they can do a voting, balloting order. But I think this is very important to get the discussion out. We're going to vote on it tonight. Obviously, we got a motion made and seconded to vote on this. So I thought it was very important to let the public know what's in front of us. Sometimes you don't have this particular paperwork sitting right in front of you. So please be aware that some of your lines on the precincts have changed. I'm sitting down with the mayor the other day, and Madam Clerk, and looking at the map going, oh wow, these did shift a little bit, in particular precincts and particular wards. So it'll also let folks know that if their precinct or their ward has changed, it'll also be in the mailing as well. So be on the lookout, folks and citizens and voters out there, for this particular information. So we got a motion made and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Devine. Counselor Harris. Counselor Liang. Counselor Mahoney. Counselor McCarthy. President Dubonna.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Next item is number 2, 2023-027, in order adoption of the 2023 political plan.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Counselor Kane and seconded by Counselor Liang. Any discussion on the motion? On this particular one, just to elaborate real quick on this one. And we sat down the other day on this, too. The preliminary or primary election will not be in the month of September. It'll be in the month of August. So if there is a preliminary election, it is on Tuesday, August 29th. So just a word to all the folks out there, if there is a preliminary, if there's more than three people in a particular ward that are running, or there's more than seven in an at-large or a school committee race, there'll be a preliminary election in the month of August. With that, we got a motion made and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Devine. Counselor Harris. Counselor Liang. Counselor Mahoney. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
President Dubonna.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number 3, 2023-028, a gift for $120 from CTA Construction Managers LLC to the Quincy Animal Shelter.
Motion to approve made by Counselor McCarthy, seconded by Counselor Andronico. All those in favor, say aye. Impose? The ayes have it. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Does that complete our agenda items for tonight?
It does, thank you.
Thank you so much. Approval of previous meeting minutes of February 27, 2023. Now, I think, motion made by Counselor Liang, Counselor Kane, seconded by Counselor Liang. All those in favor?
Yeah, we're different.
I'm looking at Counselor Liang, and if he makes a motion. Motion made by Counselor Kane, seconded by Counselor Liang. All those in favor? Say aye. Aye. The ayes have it on that one. Communication reports from the mayor, other city officers, and city boards. Counselor Kane?
No, I don't have any.
Unfinished business and proceeding meeting. Reports of committees. I'd like to recognize ordinance committee chair McCarthy.
Thank you. Earlier, we had a solar presentation by Shelley Dean on allowing the administration to run with an RFP to solicit certain public opportunities for more solar panels, and I'd like to put down a motion to approve.
Motion made by Counselor McCarthy to approve the location of solar energy implementation on public properties. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counselor Harris. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
President Dubonna.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Any other reports of committees? Presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. I'd like to recognize Counselor Harris.
Thank you, President Dubonna. It's really with a very heavy heart tonight that I have to acknowledge the passing of one of my constituents and friend, Robert Shula. Bob is originally from Sicily, Italy, and he died on February 27th. Bob was very known around our community. After getting his Baba's license and working in local area shops, Bob opened his own Baba shop, the Squanum Cutters, in 1981, where he quickly became part of the fabric of the community. And that's an understatement. His customers soon became his friends and a second family. However, nothing was more important to Bob than his six children. He worked tirelessly to provide a home filled with love for all of them. Bob was very much known for not having a bad word to say about anyone, which that is why it made him become quite the person in the community that he was. He would be so missed by all who knew him, and I've never experienced in my years. I've lived in several communities in my 62 years. Three different communities in Dorchester, and then we moved, me and my wife moved here. And it was a place you could go to find out what was going on at Squanum Cutters, right there, right in the center of Squanum. And it was apropos that it was the center of Squanum, because he made it what it was. And it was a place that people could go, feel comfortable, have a chat, and obviously have a haircut. But I certainly, and there's so many more people out there, the sadness that I saw, experienced over the weekend, was, and over last week, was overwhelming. So thank you, Mr. President, for indulging. Thank you.
Counselor Harrison. I, too, was a personal friend of Bob, and I'm going to truly miss him over at Squanum Cutters. Truly just a legendary person. My thoughts and prayers go out to him and his family. Just to elaborate a little bit about knowing Bobby, that my middle boy played on the T-ball team, and we played for Squanum Cutters. And during the end of the season, he'd be out there with us, with the pizza and the ice cream, and taking pictures with the team. So he will be dearly, dearly missed, and just his smile and all good things to say about folks. So I'm going to miss Bob. Any of the counselors? Counselor Devine, you're at the floor.
Thank you. I'd just like to make mention that Mrs. Linda McGillicuddy passed away on February 18th, peacefully at home, surrounded by her family. And I just want to say our thoughts and prayers are with the family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, in the last few weeks, myself and other community members have become aware of a couple of projects that conceivably came out of nowhere. First was the Lone Sailor statue that was proposed to go in the Teardrop at Marina Bay. And just this past weekend, I know all of you have seen and had the proposed Ruth Gordon Amphitheater and its replacement with the, the filling in of Ruth Gordon Amphitheater, and the replacement with the playground. You know, I was talking to the Natural Resources Director today, and I was assured that the Ruth Gordon Amphitheater is on hold. And I believe the Lone Sailor statue is also on hold at this time. These projects share something in common that I've been concerned about for a while, and some other people up here as well. They need more information to be shared, because this council, and this council, and the public, because the monies that are funding this are ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Acts, that haven't been disclosed and haven't been shared with this public. But they are in this book, and I do request that it come. According to the ARPA fund spending request from the auditor, the Lone Sailor statue in Park has a budget of $1.5 million. And to date, $389,000 has been spent on plans and a statue, and on land that the city does not even own. I'm happy to say the Marina Bay residents showed up and voiced its displeasure with this surprise project. This weekend, I received, as many of you have, I know, multiple emails, phone calls, you viewed on social media, discussions from residents angry, shocked, bewildered, as they learned about plans for the Ruth Gordon Amphitheater and its demise. I was informed today by the Commissioner of Natural Resources that federal money, ARPA, funds was used for this project. No plans have been shared with this body or the public. The body has requested and invited the administration multiple times to report on the use of ARPA funds. We have received $46 million of ARPA funds, which has been all spent and encumbered. So what other surprises are we all in store for? I appreciate the directors taking the fall by telling us that there are no formal plans, that this is just a recommendation in the context of a broader improvement at Pageant Field. But it appears that there was actually a vote, and it was approved by the park board on November 7th. I'd like to read it. These are from the minutes, November 7th, at 5:30. Ruth Gordon Amphitheater. Administration would like to begin work on the repurpose reuse of the Ruth Gordon Amphitheater, location as part of a bigger project at Pageant Field. Ruth Gordon's name and legacy will continue in another manner, as if that's the only thing we should be concerned about. I was told the amphitheater destruction was currently on hold, and further discussions and planning shall only take place with a public process by the mayor, and other renovations will continue this spring. Let's not mention all those trees that are gone. I guess I did mention it. There's no limit to what we can accomplish when we work together, quote and unquote. This is the theme I heard at a recent state of the city address. These projects should have, have community input from the start. It's upsetting to people when they find out about them after they have already been decided or even started or completed. And, you know, finding out about these things in the Quincy Sun and being told, go back and read it from three weeks ago, that's not really finding out about it. The city councils up here and the residents have connections to these places. We are personally invested in them. I implore the administration to live up to their own words. Please come before the city council, show us their use for the ARPA funds. Give us that formal presentation on future work, such as Merrymount Park or all the other projects that have been spent of the $46 million. And let's truly start working together. I want to make sure I thank the public for their continued diligence on the city that they love. I was told today that, you know, this was, you know, that the stuff that was on social media was not true, it hasn't really started, it was a non-starter. But these things are happening, and we're finding out about them in the newspapers. We're having 20-minute city council meetings. There's nothing on the agenda, and we hold up books every week. There are things that we should be discussing. There are things that people want to know. And there are projects that could be really successful in the city of Quincy if we just shared the information. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize Executive Secretary to the Mayor, Chris Walker. Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor's thoughts are appreciated. I would note, just for the record, that the resolution relative to the ARPA funding, as far as the administration is concerned, has been met. The information was provided over the course of last year. If the council, whatever committee that resides in, would like a full hearing on what information the administration has provided, and has provided and continues to provide, we're totally fine with that. We have a great story to tell about where this funding has gone, between nonprofits, between projects that would not be able to be completed in any other way, between funding hazardous duty pay for all of our city employees. It's a great story. There was a full spread in the Patriot Ledger. There was a full report given to this body relative to the spending of the federal funding. If the council so requests, the committee, wherever it lies, would like a hearing on it, that's fine, we're happy to talk about it. It's a good story. There's a lot of stuff that we would have never been able to do that we're able to get done as a community because of that federal funding. It's a great story. Happy to talk about it. As to the two things that Counselor Mahoney mentioned, the Ruth Gordon Amphitheater, yes, there was some discussion at the park board relative to the future of the amphitheater. A worthy discussion, that does need to take place in public and will take place in the public, relative to the lack of use of that site, potential safety concerns of that site, and a number of other issues at that site. But no decision was made, no plan was ever presented, there was no plan. When the plan is ready, if there is a plan to repurpose the amphitheater, of course it will be shared, and as the mayor said today, something like that, of course, will include a public process. As far as the Lone Sailor statue is concerned, this is the United States Navy Memorial. This is a huge deal for the city of Quincy, to be able to put this kind of a memorial honoring our Navy veterans at a place that held such a place in history, both for naval shipbuilding and air travel. The Naval Air Station at Marina Bay, then was Squanum Point, played a remarkable role in our history. This has been a process that has gone on internally with the Board of Directors at the Marina Bay at their request. It was their request during that time that the city deal directly with the owners of the property, where the mayor had proposed the statue. The board management then changed the last couple of months. The new board requested that the mayor hold a community meeting to talk about this. Within days, a community meeting was scheduled. The community feedback was given, the mayor listened, as he does, and we're going in a different direction. It was clear from that meeting that the folks in the Marina Bay Access Board, which own, have rights to the Teardrop, were most likely not going to support that monument. have rights to the Teardrop, were most likely not going to support that monument at that particular location. So we're going to go in a different direction. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel, I'd like to recognize Counsel Harris.
Yes, absolutely. Oh, boy. Absolutely, absolutely. I want to follow up on that because obviously Marina Bay is in Ward 6, and, and I, I was at that meeting with Counsel Mahoney and the mayor, and it was, it was the perfect example of, of the administrating, the administration hearing the voice, voices of those folks that were there. And hence, that project is not going to take place where they were suggesting it would. And similar things are going on, especially in Marina Bay, and I, I want to mention it now because I got notified, thank you to Jim Fatsis, about another project that's over in Marina Bay that folks reached out to me. I sent the mailing out to them, the, the steel building for storage for boats at 333 Victory Road, which is right there. It would be front and center as you come in. That has been withdrawn because they heard the voice of the people of Marina Bay, just like any other community we have here in all six wards. I, again, when I heard the next, a couple of days later, that the mayor had decided not to go forward with the, the Sailor's Monument, as saddened as I was by it because it looked like a beautiful project, I, I felt that it was, it was, it was, what we do here in this country is the people talked, and, and thank God, the, what we had was the administration listened. So that's basically all I have to say, and I wanted to make sure that I got it out there because some folks were going to go into the planning, and I couldn't get a letter out to them. I posted something on social media, which I'm not, I'm not very comfortable doing, as far as not showing up to the planning board meeting on Wednesday. There's no way we could have gotten a letter out soon enough to them, to the folks, so, but I, hopefully, everything, it'll, you know, hopefully, nobody, it won't slip through the cracks. I've asked people to make sure they get ahold of everybody that, you know, it was a great 400, 400 people signed a petition for that 333 Victory against it. So, you know, people, they, they're starting to listen to the people, and that's who we represent. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Harris. Any other counselors? Seeing none, we're moving on to motion orders and resolutions. Scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings. I'd like to recognize Counsel Harris.
I'd like to schedule for the March 20th meeting, two public hearings, one at 6:30 for grant of location National Grid Gas Center Street and Gothfield Street, and at 6:35, I'd like to schedule a, a hearing for grant of location Comcast 147 C Avenue on the 20th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have those two? Okay. Thank you, Counsel Harris. Any other counselors for scheduling meetings and public hearings? So we're going to be back here on Monday, March 20th at 6:30 with the two hearings with Counsel Harris, 6:30 and 6:35 will probably, unless there's something else coming on the agenda, will be on at 6:40. If there's another considered ordinance meeting or finance committee meeting, it'll be right at 6:40, and then we'll have our regular schedule that's probably 7:00 or 7:30. So with that, that completes all the items.
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned made by Counsel Kane, seconded by Counsel Liang. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.